Recording in progress.
June 14, regular Board of Supervisors session.
Very good. Thanks Jake. We're on. I think that was the signal we're on. All right, very good. Welcome this morning. We'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Entertain a motion for this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johner.
Aye.
Any communications? It's Jake.
Nothing that I don't think went to you guys first.
Okay, very good. Supervisors?
Nothing that's not already on the agenda.
No.
Okay, same here. Very good. Thank you. Public comments is the portion of our agenda where the public can speak on items not listed on the agenda. The Board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Nothing in the room? Anything online? Emily? Very good. We will move on. Would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Onto business. First item, we have a special event application request from the Knoxville Area Ministers Association for a Flag Day program. Mr. Hannah, is that yours?
That's it.
Do we have the microphone, the portable mic, please, sir, for Mr. Hannah?
I really don't have a lot to say. I'm just hoping that you approve it because that's today. You know, the wait time for getting on the agenda is, it caught me off guard this time.
It's a hot ticket, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah, it is.
It is. A lot of prep work goes into this thing here. So, all right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Hannah on this request?
I do not.
No, I'm fine with it.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Is there, is there?
You're all invited. Everyone's invited. 12:15 at the courthouse.
Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve. Special event.
Second.
Johner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Second item, we have an update from City Appella. City Administrator Mike Nardini is here to update us on Prairie Ridge and the Timberview Urban Renewal Plan. Mr. Nardini, thanks for coming this morning.
Chairman Ramey, we're members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having me here today. And Renee, if we could actually start off on slide number two, please, for the presentation. We have a slide, a brief slide involving requests that we're making for a little office and services act as well. As Chairman Ramey stated, we're here to provide an update today on the Prairie Ridge development and also discuss the housing development in Appella as well, the Timberview development. But before getting to those two developments, we thought it'd be helpful just to have just a general update on recent developments that occurred, positive developments that occurred in the City of Appella and Marion County. What you can see up on our slide is there's been a lot of development-related activity in Appella. We've had a significant expansion in housing in our community, which is a very good, good thing for Marion County as well. The two projects that we're here to talk about, Prairie Ridge and Timberview, you're well aware of the location of Prairie Ridge, but when we get to the Timberview development and the update on that this morning, you'll notice that that development is located in the northeast corner of Appella as well. So overall, when we talk about housing, several positive developments that are going on in our community, including the Dupree Development and downtown of the South Main Development. In addition, we've also had development that's occurred around the Lost Lot and Golf Forest as well as the Prairie Ridge development. In addition, we've also had developments funding to that too, which is rental housing development, which is new for the area as well, which is the Katie Development, which has been very positive for our community. So Renee, if we could please proceed to the next slide. In addition, we've also had very good success, and these are all recent additions in Appella and Marion County on the quote commercial industrial side of things. We're going to start off with Lately North American. For those of you that were able to attend the recent grand opening at Lately, that's a new facility that's just built off on the hip we were to go down in Appella on Highway 163 and we're doing the intersection, basically the county line road, which is exit 44. Right southwest of that interchange is the new corporate headquarters for Lately North American. It's roughly a $20 million dollar development. It's very positive for Marion County. Through that development, we were actually able to retain several high-paying jobs and additionally, that's also expanded employment within our community as well. So again, a very positive development for the City of Appella and Marion County. In addition, since we're talking about Prairie Ridge today, we've also thought it'd be helpful just for the Board to have an understanding of two commercial developments that are currently, one is already constructed. That is Smash Park has been constructed and that's going to be a very, it was already a very popular destination in Appella. It's a recreational restaurant and also it offers numerous amenities for the public physically here towards the young professionals and it's desperately needed in our community. That's something that the personal business and industry as well. And in addition, Chick-fil-A is also planning on locating in the Prairie Ridge commercial development. We'll show you the locations of these here soon, but we anticipate that construction should be beginning soon on Chick-fil-A. And hopefully, within the luck, we'll have the building completed by this fall. So that'll be another popular destination in Appella. Renee, please go on. Now, when we talk about Prairie Ridge, I think it's very important to understand why the Prairie Ridge development came about and what was really the origins of the development, the need for the development. And the truth of the matter is, even though we've had a lot of housing developments in Appella, it was desperately needed. The Supervisors were well aware of that Marion County Housing Assessment. The Housing Assessment identified the additional needs at the time, which is 2015, 2016, needs of approximately an additional 966 housing units in the Appella market. Those housing units would need to be online immediately to expand through here to 2025. Now, the numbers that we have up today, the Supervisors John are as well aware of this. We've been very busy in finding the zoning commission for the City of Appella. But as you can see, today we approved over 400 additional housing units and that's made it through the planning process. And that's something to keep in mind. That even though there's been significant development in Appella, we have a lot of work to yet to be done. And if you wanted to say it's, we're almost halfway to our goal of getting up to the 966 by year 2025. So housing is still desperately needed in Appella and that's something to keep in mind as we talk about the Timberview development later on this morning. So let's go ahead and talk about Prairie Ridge and have the update for Prairie Ridge. Renee, Steve, on it. More additional detail, but the Prairie Ridge, as the Supervisors well aware of the need for workforce housing, was expressed by business and industry in Appella and it's needed in Appella. And that's something that we've heard a lot in fear from, from business and industry. And when we talk about developments like Prairie Ridge, it's a difficult development to have when we talk about workforce development because the need isn't necessarily for low and moderate income housing. There's lots of incentive programs that are available through the state of Iowa for those, for that type of houses. For the next, next housing up, the next chain out, there's no incentives for. Those are very difficult to build affordable housing in your community. Really, when you look at the partnership that we have with the Supervisors, that was really the identified need in Appella and that's really where Prairie Ridge is meant to satisfy with that as well. And overall, when you talk about developments like Prairie Ridge, please keep in mind that it's been a very challenging environment for housing in general in the nation, the housing costs that have been occurring throughout, throughout the nation. But also, when you look at developments like Prairie Ridge, you talk about building affordable housing, that's not necessarily low and moderate income housing. This really, your workforce is really faced with two, two challenges. A, there's not an abundance of state incentives for housing like that. Two, when you look at the cost of public infrastructure, it's significant and that was the case with Prairie Ridge. And so that's really kind of the basis for development, the reason why the development was formed at first by sort of partnership with Marion County and the City of Appella and Marion County, joint partners on the project. And that was very the need was at workforce housing. Up to date, we've had a lot of success in Prairie Ridge. Please, Renee, if you could please. Now, overall, before we get to that, if you want to skip ahead, overall, overall, the development is roughly 93 homes that was planned with the development and roughly 25 housing units. As you can see up there, what we have to date that has been completed online is Supervisor Johner, being Marion County Representative on our Planning and View Committee, is today we approved 20 housing applications for homes in the Prairie Ridge development. The city has issued 22 building permits for those homes and we've issued a certificate of occupancy. So there's eight homes that are stated in the Prairie Ridge development. Now, the reason why I'm pointing this out for us and from our standpoint, the City of Appella standpoint, we believe there's been a lot of significant activity of Prairie Ridge. Please keep this in mind, that we didn't accept the public infrastructure discreet Prairie Ridge development until December of 2020. So when you look at the building seasons that we've had out of Prairie Ridge, we really only had one building season where lots could actually be sold, really built homes. That was 2021. Now, when we're talking about building permits, we've issued 22 building permits in one building season, basically a little bit of more than building season for the Prairie Ridge development. In the City of Appella's goal on the tip of the ear, we averaged 25 building permits for the entire city. So when you look at the Prairie Ridge development, we think there's been significant activity out there and it's very positive what's going on, how the development is as well. So Renee, I know that we had, I probably skipped around on you, but I know we had a map that shows the location of Prairie Ridge and as well as the Smash Park and Chick-fil-A. But as you can see, that's an overview of the Prairie Ridge development once again. There's 93 total lots out there, 25 are dedicated, in addition, 25 are dedicated for townhome development. And as you can see off the southeast is where the existing Smash Park or the Big S is. That's the location of the existing Smash Park. The Chick-fil-A will be built southeast of that, very close proximity. We believe, once the Chick-fil-A is built, our long-term plans are on Washington Street and G-28, Five Field Road. Because ultimately, we plan very soon in school and traffic signals on that development. In addition, we're also going to be making install additional turn lanes through projected traffic volumes out of that intersection. So very positive. We believe those two developments, the Smash Park as well as the Chick-fil-A will actually drive home sales in the Prairie Ridge residential development. And talking to the developers, they've also informed me that demand is still very strong in the Prairie Ridge development. We're looking for positive developments as we proceed. And once again, I also want to just caution the Board, not caution the Board, caution is the wrong word, but it's just a very challenging time as far as housing is concerned. We've had considerable success on the Prairie Ridge development to date. And if you look in light of the environments that we've dealt with, COVID-19 escalating housing costs, to think that we're actually issued 22 building permits and actually have a chance that will reclaim some homes constructed back in the years, very positive and we would term. We deem it as a success for the City of Appella to date. And the good news is the developers have also stated that they're confused to be paying Prairie Ridge development. We also have additional development that's being constructed or will be, has been constructed and will be constructed that we believe will be encouraged. Also incentivized home sales or spurred home sales, if I write terminology on that as well. So Chairman Ramey, before I entertain questions from the Supervisors on the Prairie Ridge development, forgive me for this, but we do have two of the officials from the City of Appella in attendance today. And I'd like to go ahead and introduce them. You have Mayor Don B. Ward that is an attendance and also House Number 10, House of Bance is also in attendance today as well.
Welcome this morning, Mayor Ward, Councilman. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
So before we go on to the Timberview, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have on the Prairie Ridge development.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mike. Steve, Keisha, anything you'd like to ask Mike on, on this portion of the presentation?
What do you see, Mike, as being, obviously, the economy? I guess there's no, no easy way of saying it other than it doesn't look like it's going to turn around anytime soon. Do you feel like that's going to affect maybe in the next year or two? I know, when we started this project, we talked about workforce housing. I guess I find it real hard for people now to even purchase a home at the cost, the way costs are skyrocketing. I, you know, I have, in a way, I have a personal investment in my grandson trying, trying to find a home. I mean, it's, I'm so old that I remember when houses weren't costing as much as they are now. I have, I struggle with that, about, you know, when, if the economy turns around, and I hope it does, I, I do believe that this is a good investment. I have, I have trouble dealing with the economy everybody does right now. I'm just hoping that in the future, we see a turnaround so we can get the housing costs down where people can afford it.
Supervisor McCombs, I think those are very spot on comments about the concerns with the economy and why I'm not sure I'd be able to answer the question.
Well, yeah, I know you can.
I'll give you some insights, at least from a planning standpoint. From the City of Appella standpoint, how we view subdivisions, and this is probably more pertinent to the upcoming discussion we're going to have on the Timberview development very soon. We really look at housing as essential. It's necessary to grow your economy local. And if you look at the Marion County Housing Assessment that identifies the additional need for homes in the Appella area of 966, I think our chart may be a little off. It said we approved 412, probably closer to 450 that we've had. We believe there's still a demand for housing in our community. We hear constantly about that. And one of the things from the city's standpoint is we need to plan regardless of where the economy is at. We need to plan for a rebound on it, be prepared for a rebound on it. And how we look at things, when you look at residential subdivisions on there, we always look at what your capacity is and where you should be at, what you think is the issue on building permits where you need to be. Typically, what the rule of thumb is in the city governments is if you need to have about five years' worth of supply of billable lots in your community, or less than that, considerably less than that in the City of Appella, I hope we have as far as the billable supply of lots on there. So you need to be prepared for that when the economy rebounds on that as well. So that's one aspect that we need to do from a planning standpoint. The second aspect is definitely in the housing assessment is there, there's a need for housing. We continue to see that. So from our standpoint, for new housing developments, we still think it's a worthwhile investment. We still think it's necessary to grow the economy. We still think we need to invest in housing developments in our community. That's what the city's kind of suffering.
Yeah, I get that, Mike. I understand the housing need assessment. My problem is it is how to afford it. That's, that's where I'm at. I mean, and I, and I think, you know, we've taken the right steps. I believe we're trying, we're trying to meet that future need, but I hope they can afford it.
All concerned, so.
Very good. Keisha?
Mike, I know that currently there's three builders. Two, two seem to be doing very well. One is struggling a little bit. Where are we at? Am I maybe expanding for other builders or, you know?
Yeah, that's something that the developers are actively dealing with, trying to recruit additional builders. We don't have an update as of day as far as additional builders that have been secured for the property. I can't tell you that developers are actually working on that. Hopefully, we'll have this here soon on additional builders for development on that. What they have told me is the challenge is, the economy is to get builders in development. There's more than enough demand to build, people wanting to buy lives in lots of Prairie Ridge. The challenge is getting builders who should have some, something here soon.
Okay. And then my other question, well, it's kind of just a statement. You know, I appreciate the update. I think that helps. I would like to be able to do like a monthly update. Is that something that we could get from ATI or something so that we have a, for the citizens of Marion County? Could we get something of that sort?
You bet. Be happy to provide that.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's my question.
And Mike, just to be, I think that would be a good point of clarification for everybody, that the City of Appella, the Board of Supervisors are actually working with the developer, net developers, ATI. Sometimes we forget, you're not actually developing a lot.
That's correct.
ATI is, and their responsibility is, if there are builder issues, find new builders and make sure that they transmit correct data to you and to the Board. So we got to remember that relationship as well. Tyler, you look like you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question for Mike.
You have it, Mike?
The traffic signals, turn lanes at Five Field and G-28. And the last time you were here presenting to the Board, you mentioned the possibility of annexation of that right-of-way or a development maintenance agreement. I guess what's the timeline of that return rate to traffic signals? And are you still planning to annex or do you still have an estimate?
Tyler, sorry, I won't be able to work that yet. So the, the timing on that is we're in the engineering phase for additional turn lane on that. We anticipate trying to have that project constructed yet this year. That would be the right-hand turn lane that would go into Five Field Road and going north. As far as the traffic signals are concerned, one of the things that we're going to have to have is to be able to meet warrants and actual traffic pounds on there. We believe that there's going to be a traffic demand out there, especially once the Chick-fil-A is built on the site. So as soon as we're able to get warrants on that, we tend to work with it, state and destructing the traffic signals. So that may be in a construction season or two in the future. Up until that time, we'll have the traffic of the right-hand turn lane perfectly disrupted in. Now, as far as some of the items, we still need to circle back to your office and deal with the annexation issues on the right-of-way in addition of the maintenance agreement that we have with the county. That's still on the list. That's your main office.
Very good. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions, Board, on this item? Otherwise, Mike can move on. Steve?
No, I'm good.
Very good.
I have the same question, Tyler.
Okay. All right. Very good. Mike?
Let's go ahead and talk about Timberview. And as we said, Timberview is a new development that's being proposed. It's located in the northeast corner of our community. We believe this property is the prime development for residential development. The Supervisor Martin knows and City Commissioner Resoni on the matter. The city's comprehensive plan actually has shown this area as one of the preferred residential growth areas for the City of Appella and it's located just at the northeastern Appella. And if you're familiar with Appella, you'll notice when Hazel Street actually terminates this property, it's just north of Hazel Street in Appella. It also lets the Appella vault in country as well. So, please, please go on. And what you're seeing here is the program and plan that was approved by the City, the Public City Council on it. And overall, when we talk about the program and plan that you have here, the plan that we have is about 46 acres in size if you're looking at it. The reason why I'm stating that is the developer actually has future development plans above beyond this program and plan. But the plan that we have in front of us that you're viewing up there actually has pulled over 95 homes that we built in four phases. The phase that we're here to talk about today, the potential urban role plan that we're looking to develop for the City of Appella is Phase One. And it's the black highlighted area that you're viewing up here on your screens. Now, Phase One, just to clarify, the plan that you're looking at that contains 95 homes, Phase One will be 37 homes. And that's within the black highlighted area. So let's go ahead and. And what we have pictured here is a map of the urban renewal area. And basically, that blue highlighted area is the Phase One development by developers. And when you look at the development as a whole, developers have stated they plan to build the development phases in the City of Appella. So once again, this blue highlighted area will be 37 homes on there. And we're also looking to include the urban renewal plan. This is another issue that we'll probably have to deal with Tyler's office on as well, is the maintenance agreement for East Park Lane up there as well, this type of base where you look at the annexation areas that we have. That one may all be in the system, so we'll double check on that as well. But when you look at the yellow area of East Park Lane, our thoughts are that's an existing travel road. At some point in the future, there may be a need to actually improve that existing travel road for the latest development occurs on the north part of Diesel Street. So we've included the East Park Lane portion in there as well. Every that is old inside the city limits as well as far as the East Park Lane. And as far as the city's plans are, the blue highlighted area, and what we want to talk with the Board of Supervisors today, this is just still the conceptual planning phase on it. But if you recall, what we've done for other developments in Appella is under Iowa law, forming residential urban renewal plans. Under Iowa law, they're limited to a 10-year period or a 10-year life on that as well. What our request will be in a future meeting, when this comes back in a more formalized document that you'll actually have the urban renewal plan in front of you for review, what our request will be at that point in time is to extend the local urban renewal life up to 15 years. And the reason why this is important is if you look at development in that blue highlighted area, if you're following the program and plan, we're showing the streets. Just urban roads that are in the urban renewal area and the public infrastructure costs, the developer has estimated those costs to be $2.4 million. And what's likely to occur, at least being proposed, the Public City Council would be economic development incentives, incentivize the vote to do that. Commonly, what's offered to developers on residential subdivisions is taxing, permitting, financing. And the difference between for taxing, permitting, financing from a developer's standpoint, the reason why this is important is currently, if you're capped under Iowa law for 10 years, and it all depends on how fast this development builds out, and then additional five years helps give them extra assurance that they will recoup their investment in $2.4 million in public infrastructure costs for this. So our request will be to the Supervisors, with a formal document on this, is just to extend the life of urban renewal from 10 years to 15 years. Now, in order to do this, we're also going to need permission to help the county school district. We'll be making similar requests to them as well. But we thought, we've seen this for the first time, it might be good to have a work session on this item and answer any questions that the Council, excuse me, have, or anybody that the Supervisors may have. Just to make sure before we have a formal vote on the item, that we address any concerns and questions the Supervisors may have. So Chairman Ramey, that was the purpose of today's presentation before we have to answer the questions the Supervisors may have on our proposed Timberview development.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Steve, Keisha, any questions on that? Just to get more information from Mike, as he said, he'll present a formal document later on for a future meeting.
Mike, I think it would be helpful, maybe even just for people in the room and listening online and citizens of Marion County. Can you explain what the difference is between Timberview and Prairie, Prairie Ridge?
Sure. Absolutely. Timberview, if you wanted to look at the type of housing that is going to be constructed at Timberview, it's going to be very similar to Boss Ridge on there as far as the type of housing. So that would be development that's just, that's currently being structured right now. It's just north of the Lost Lot and Golf Forest on there. It's going to be very similar to the townhouse development. The difference between Timberview and Prairie Ridge also lies in the zoning for the development. For this particular property, and for this property up here, the developer has two options. They can build their single-family, single-family home or a single-family attached home. Generally, when you look at the lots, they're a little larger lots. They're somewhere between 80 to 800 square feet up to 10,000 per feet under zoning code. When you look at the difference between Timberview and the general area in the Prairie Ridge development, Prairie Ridge is geared towards workforce housing. As the Supervisors are aware on this, in order to achieve workforce housing, we have to increase the density of the development. So generally, the difference between this development and Prairie Ridge, Prairie Ridge is geared towards workforce housing. Lots are considered smaller in Prairie Ridge. Ultimately, those lots can be 50, 55 feet width on it. For a typical development in Timberview, those lots should be somewhere between 90 to 100 feet width. So they're more conventional homes. The Prairie Ridge development, when you look at it, again, like between the variances that we approved through the Planning and Development for all of New York's borders, right, and to maximize that. It's a very popular development. So it's a different type of housing development in Prairie Ridge. This, if you wanted to look for a good comparison, if you're familiar with the townhouse development in Appella, the very similar types of homes that we, the developers, are planning for this development compared to the townhouse, Boss Ridge in Appella. And it's, we don't need to stand in direct competition for Prairie Ridge. It's a different type of home.
Very good. Thank you.
Did I answer your questions, Supervisor John?
Yeah, yeah. I, I will say, you know, obviously, sitting on planning and zoning and watching this, you know, I did drive through there and it is, it's going to be, you know, as you guys develop that or the developer, you know, there's going to be some things that's got to be worked out, just because it is kind of a, a tight space when you, when you drive back there. So, but yeah. I guess I thought that the lots were more like 80, but maybe I misread that.
There was 80, it's 8,500 square feet for the single-family and that's just the minimum on lots. So I was thinking, generally, they're a little bit bigger than the Prairie Ridge development. If you were to go out to Prairie Ridge, tip, the typical lot Prairie Ridge is about 55 feet.
Right.
Steve, any questions for Mike on, on this Timberview project?
I guess my only question would be, and I suppose we'll get into that in, you know, in detail later about, what are we asking the Marion County taxpayer in this development? What are we asking of them?
For this development, basically, what's going to be proposed to developers is a concept of taxing and financing, which means the developer will install the infrastructure. What we plan to do from our side, side of things, is offer some form of rebate to property taxes that are collected in the development on it. So from the taxpayer's standpoint, from the public taxpayer's standpoint, at least from the City of Appella's side of the view of it, when you look at the Phase One and the 37 homes, those homes will not be built unless the public infrastructure is in place. The developer, when you look at this development, feels it's just, it's caused prohibited to do this type of development without some form of economic development incentives. That's what we're proposing upfront. But the developers, they will be taking all the risk. They're going to be responsible for installing all the streets in development. Once all the streets are built, dedicated to the City of Appella, at that point in time, there are likely to be at least some sort of incentive option offered to the developers and it will be geared towards these houses with delta development. So that area, that blue area. with delta development. So that area, that blue area, as houses are built, property taxes will be collected and rebated back to the developer. From Marion County standpoint, when we talk about property taxes, please keep in mind for the development, is A, this development will not occur likely without some sort of incentives that will be offered to the developer. B, as houses are being built, it's just the operational levies that will be rebated back to the developer. The reason why I'm stating that is the county will still have access to the extended service levy for the new homes that will be built on this site. And how we look at things on their big picture standpoint, I've answered your question. When we look at our service levels and our staff, we view it as there's thirty-seven homes being proposed. We do not believe that additional demand on city staff and city resources will contribute in having property tax increases, at least for the city of Pella, and serving those thirty-seven homes. In fact, we view it as just the opposite. We view it as the need in Pella for additional housing on it. So from our standpoint, at least from a property tax standpoint, we don't think there's going to be any impact from the city property tax standpoint. Now, from the county standpoint, we haven't asked the question if your staff or additional thirty-seven homes somehow trigger additional service level demands. I'm sure the answer to that is yes, but how great a factor that would be to trigger additional, I would say, resources attributed to this development. We don't believe that we're going to have that at our end on it, and we have not asked that of the county. We don't believe that's the case with the thirty-seven homes.
We're not asking for an initial cash out leave from the taxpayers, correct?
All we're asking for on this is simply, is the developers taking the risk and putting in the two point four million dollars for the streets. All we're asking for is the authority to operate in at least a fifteen-year payback period for the development. So...
And the school, Pella School District has to get involved in this, correct?
Yeah. In order to do this, this is something that's very similar, if you recall, what we approved similar agreements for the Boss Ridge development in Pella. We also approved a very similar agreement for Boss Lawn in the states in Pella's route. It simply just increases the time period for that blue highlighted area up there from ten years up to fifteen years. That helps get the developers, they look at their finances and how quickly the development will be built out, it gives them some assurances that they'll actually repay the two point four million dollars in public infrastructure costs.
Do you have developers that are interested in this, Mike?
Yes, yes, there is.
I think, and probably maybe a term, Stephen, make sure you understand that, you know, we're not going to be able to see the property tax, full property tax, for fifteen years.
I understand that.
Make sure that people understand that, too.
My concern was an initial cash out.
Right, right. That's a great question. Very good. Anything else for Mike?
No, that's all I had.
Very good. Mike, I want to thank you again for that presentation. And Don, Councilman, thank you for coming. Don, anything you'd like to add, or?
I'd just bore everybody if I showed up. Mike did a good job.
All right, very good. Very good. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it very much. Is there a motion to close discussion on this item?
Yeah, I made motion to close discussion.
Second. McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Very good. And we'll look forward, Mike, at some point in the future for a document on that project.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mike's up. Oh, Mike, you're up again.
All right.
Got a resolution for special election on local option sales tax.
Yes, sir. Yes, Chairman, if you go back to our original slide, sorry, we have problems up on there. We have a little bit out of order this morning on this. Okay.
First one, Ramey?
Yeah, the first one. There we go.
There we go.
Perfect. I'm over here talking today and ask the supervisors permission to authorize an election for renewal of the city of Pella's local option sales and services tax in our corporate limits. We realize Marion County recently approved an extension of their local option sales and services tax, well, Knoxville and several cities. In Marion County, our particular tax is set to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Now, what we're requesting permission from supervisors today through this resolution is just to simply authorize the election, because we do not make up the city of Pella over fifty percent of the population of Marion County. We need support from another governing body. Do so in that spot, we support the request today. Now, specifically, what's being proposed at the city of Pella is to renew the city's local option sales and services tax. Once again, ours expires in about fifteen months. We're looking to extend our tax for twenty years. So the new tax will be for a term of twenty years. And the proposed referendum date that we have is scheduled for September thirteenth of this year. Now, I believe I would just like to keep in mind that this is an important item, not only for our community local option sales and services tax, there's been a lot of good projects being built in the last twelve years with the question of our current tax, but also for Marion County as a whole. The city of Pella currently generates about sixty percent of the sales tax in Marion County. So this is in interest for all Marion County, as you consider this item. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that, I just wanted to mention that we are not prepared to talk about this today. What we do anticipate in the future, that we will be making our request for a new, our red redistribution agreement that we have with Marion County. Again, we just wanted to make sure the board was aware that we will be making that request in the future. Our red redistribution agreement has been placed since, the current one has been in place since two thousand and eleven, I believe. But the date back, the prior versions date back all the way back to two thousand and seven, some form of redistribution, we will be making that request in the future at this point. So once again, what we're simply asking for is permission today, hold on election for extension, city's local option sales and services tax, and the tentative date for that referendum is scheduled for September thirteenth of this year. So Chairman Ramey, that concludes our presentation. Before we have to answer questions supervisors may have on the site.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Jake, we've approved, I think, all the other municipal districts, right?
Yeah, this is not anything unlike what was done for the city school election last year. So the city of Knoxville, Melton, Dallas, they all combined efforts, I think, in how they even helped back in to just allow the election to take place. It's an Iowa rule that's a little bit odd that a local option sales and services tax imposition election can't take place unless our office, where you guys actually sit, is in order to our office to conduct the election, fifty percent of their representation jurisdictions. So because Pella isn't only fifty percent of the total population, that's why they need a partner to at least get this to election, which is exactly what happened for the November twenty twenty-one with the other cities.
Okay, very good. Supervisors, any questions for Mr. Nardini on this?
Actually, I just have a question for Jake. Did most of us do no sunsets? They're doing a sunset, correct?
That's correct. Currently, all the jurisdictions excluded the sunset in Pella, at this point with this resolution. It's included on the official ballot line. It's something that would be on the official ballot. So in twenty years, if any of us are still here, this question could come up again if it hasn't been received.
Okay. And the other one is, when it comes to special elections like this, does the city pay or do we pay? How does that work?
In this case, for a special election, the city will be able to waste for certain services. It's not all of our expense, but there are certain things that can be charged back. So the city will receive an invoice.
You're good with that?
I think it always is that way, right?
Yeah. So the county takes care of all the general elections, primary and generals, and then like city school gets a portion or a portion. We can't charge our time and those types of things, but paper ballots, programming, anything like that, we need to voice back to the city.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Mike, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there a motion on this resolution?
I move the approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty-one.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion to support. Jake?
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi, very good. Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next item, we have a discussion for a fireworks application, the Crystal Lake Association. Is there anybody here from the Crystal Lake Association? Would you folks like to speak on behalf of the application or opposed?
Oh.
If you do, you have to, we have to get you a mic, or you have to come up here. And we're all electronic now.
I didn't realize.
It's all right.
I'm Chris Egan. I'm president of the Crystal Lake Association, what we call Knoxville States. Have been for several years. I've lived in the association twenty years. The fireworks display has been going on well before I ever moved there. We've been, had great, great reviews, great things I've worked with it, and we're trying to jump through all our hoops and make sure everything's done correctly with fire protection. Mike Van Dool can give you a lot more. He's got care of this. He's the guy that actually does the shooting. We've had some complaints, actually one complaint, and there's about three hundred residents out there, there's a hundred and ten homes. And so we're just trying to get the permit. I think in the past, some of those things have been lax. And in some of that's, you know, in today's world, we have to do some more things than we had planned on before. We are insured. We try to cover, obviously, just trying to cover all the bases, right? And watching distances on the homes, we've got approval from homeowners that live on the south side of the dam, because we are applying for a road closure, to close the dam. This is a public road. We'll be closed for about three hours. We've done this in the past for several years. Again, like I say, I don't know if there's some questions. I think Mike is the guy that we want to ask the technical questions.
No, I appreciate that. Board, do you have any questions regarding this application? I know we've had some comments come in. One in particular, just concerns about, I think, the proximity of their home to where the fireworks are being lit off. It's on the dam or close to the dam, isn't it?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, maybe if you, yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Good morning. My name's Mike Van Dool. I'm a lead pyrotechnician for J and L displays. Kind of referenced Chris a little bit. This is my thirty-seventh year shooting fireworks at Knoxville States. So we've been doing it for a considerable amount of time. I remember about four or five years ago, I sat next to Sheriff Sam Hall, and two of you guys were on the board, and we were talking about all this small pop-up fireworks display sets coming up for sale. One of my recommendations, I think, in that day was to, for Marion County to come up with some type of NFPA eleven twenty-three fireworks permit application. So I applaud you guys for doing that. You'll find in my application packet that not only did I complete your application, but I also completed an eleven twenty-three NFPA fireworks permit application, which I think is a little bit more in-depth. It provides you a shoot site display. It provides you all of our fire protection, the type of shell we're shooting, one point three Gs. So it's probably been, this is probably our third year, maybe, Tyler, that we've actually have asked for Marion County Road Department to issue a road closure permit. And the reason for that, that we do that is, for one, it is a hazard prior to the shoot to have bystanders, vehicles crossing Knoxville's, or the dam of Crystal Lake. We try to have the road back open within an hour after the site. That gives us ample time to remove all of the computer and electronic shoot technology that we use from the roadside. It also ensures us to be able to make sure that the site is secure and safe for the passing of bystanders and vehicles for many explosives that maybe did not go off. So what I like to kind of address is the individual that you're referring to, for every one inch of shell, we have to have seventy feet of clearance according to NFPA eleven twenty-three. So the largest shell that we will be shooting is a three-inch shell. So that provides us with two hundred and ten feet of clearance. I believe this map was generated by your office. Is that correct, Tyler? I only suspect that because I believe the citizen, the homeowner of this area went in and had this done. So I'm actually using his map to show you the clearances that we have to those five, six residences in the correct proximity. So our closest is two hundred and ninety-five feet. His house is four hundred and twenty feet, I believe. So in accordance to NFPA eleven twenty-three, we need two hundred and ten feet of clearance. And we succeed that according to our map here of our closest residences. Our road closure permit, and Tyler can probably speak to this, I think it's contingent upon your approval. Is that correct, Tyler? So contingent upon yours, your approval, the road will be closed for thirty hours, I think, is what it says. I'm not real sure. I guess three hours. We have a letter from Chief Thompson, who will provide fire protection that evening, that I believe is submitted in there. And if you guys got any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer those in regards to actually fireworks themselves.
Oh, very good.
Otherwise...
Are the residents on, are the residents on the south side of the dam, are they aware of the road closure?
So it is my understanding, Chris Egan and Robbie Evenger has either hand-delivered with, and a signature has been obtained for those road closures.
This should be...
As well as one certified...
Where we have...
A letter was sent to the one citizen who's objecting to it.
The only reason I ask is they're going to be, you know, they're going to be cut off from the road.
Yeah, and they are aware of it. And I believe the letter that Keisha has addresses that issue.
We have an initial, all but the one citizen is complaining. They've all, everybody else's initial that this would be any distance, even approximately close to the fireworks. And everybody on the south side has done it except the resident that's involved. Everybody's been notified. He personally was sent and registered letter. So he told us, I said, we didn't notify him and some things like that. So we know for that, our ducks are in a row that way. And our permit does state that we will not issue a permit. We have proof of those notifications as we had last year, which we did, signature notification from all the residents. There are also provisions within our permit for timeframe, as Mike mentioned, and also the allowance of any emergency vehicles in the event of an emergency on the south side of the dam. Last year or the year before, whenever we started issuing a permit, we worked with Sheriff's Office and developed this permit, just like we would with any other special application, whether it be a fire, K, an ATP race, or anything else for a short-term closure. Public events, we work with individuals and organizations all the time to issue up permits and work through the safety procedures they need to follow, and they have done since today.
Very good. Thank you. Board, any questions on this application?
I'd just like to make a comment in regards to, I appreciate you guys doing the application. I appreciate you, you know, providing all the extra detail. And so, yeah, I do know that there's several people that, you know, do support this. You know, I do understand that there is opposition by ones, so.
Yeah, gentlemen, I want to thank you for the thoroughness of your, of your application and going through this process. We do want to take the comments of residents seriously and make sure that we weigh and balance all the security concerns and the safety concerns. I think you've done that. And then, in the event we have to reevaluate it at some future date, we would, if there was something that merited that. Right now, I don't believe that it does. I think you've gone and taken maximum safeties for an event of this nature. So Jason, anything you want to add?
First of all, I apologize. I had another Zoom meeting I had to be on, or so I apologize for getting on here a little bit late. Did you guys talk in regards to our county ordinance on the definitions, Tyler, on whether that applied or did not apply?
No, we didn't talk about that.
Okay, so just on, when we were looking at the county ordinance and different things there, there's some definitions that are listed in the definition section. And it was when Tyler and I met to kind of discuss this, we felt like those ordinances really didn't apply to the commercial aspect of it. So it kind of left just the road closure aspect in regards to our mind. Did I sum that up right, Tyler?
Yes, I see Mike over here nodding his head also regarding per fragile, just what is fireworks and type of fireworks.
It's not on.
Not ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I had to add. So I think as for the board of supervisors, it comes down to whether, on just the road closure aspect of it, not so much whether it falls under the county ordinance side.
Yeah, yeah. Looks like you have a comment. Yeah, yeah, look like you have a comment.
I think the only thing I'd like to add to for application processes, like I said before, I remember recommending that you guys have some form of an application process and I think you guys need to really address this type of a fireworks display in your ordinance somehow. Because it's, it's pretty vague on exactly what it is that we have to provide you and I think it's important that you guys consider shoot site and the actual type of professional experience that anyone would come in and shoot the shot. And so I just, I think it needs to kind of define that a little bit better from a professional standpoint versus, you know, a pop-up tent coming up wanting to sell fireworks in the city or in the county or something like that.
Sure, sure. And I, and I appreciate those comments and one of the things we would do to evaluate that is reconcile that with current Iowa law, which pretty much allows you to shoot fireworks off anywhere you want to do it. Thank you Iowa Legislature. But anyway, good comment, we'll take a note of that and I think any other questions? Very good, is there a motion on this application?
Yeah, I make motion to approve the application.
Second?
John.
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye, very good. Thank you gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a disposition request on a Marion County parcel, 18692. And that is Michaela's, I believe. And is that Jake?
It's been kind of, we've been ongoing conversation, I don't know if Brianna is on this call or not, so I received a, I don't, I don't remember at this point actually, it was a phone call or an email from this individual acquiring about a piece of land down in Hamilton.
Yes.
That is titled to Marion County. And so she has great interest in acquiring it for, I think, maybe something when she comes to town during business trips and she has family in the area, something like that. So she is inquiring to basically acquire Marion County land. And so we talked with Ross a little bit about back fourth quarter to find out why it was in her name, those types of things. So it looks like it was a previous assigned tax sale, the county has title to it. So it wasn't like through purchasing it or something like that. So attorney's office feels it's ours, ours being the county's, to do with what she wants. This was kind of a discussion point here with an official request from this individual to start the process to acquire this from the county and put it back on tax rules. And she can do with it what she wants, there is not an abstract. She understands that and if, if you guys choose to start the process or at least go through the process, it would be just like anything else with something, we'll have to attorney's office assist and create a notice of a public hearing, if you want to dispose of the property, hold that public hearing, then at some point you guys decide if you want to sell to that person, if you want to do bids, if you want to, I mean, it's your, it's your.
Right.
It's your decision point, if you want to just accept what she's offering because of what it is or go a different method, but you know, we do have to go through the standard process that you guys are familiar with and just did from across the street. We just, it was to the point where we needed to see if you wanted to start or not.
Right, right, really the request is do we want to initiate a process to sell this parcel?
That's exactly, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, so.
There wasn't an action on disposing of the property.
Right, right.
It's like, are you even interested in starting the process?
Right, Board, do you have any questions for Jake on that?
Yeah, my question is, does Marion County actually have possession? If it's an alley, wouldn't it be this city of Hamilton, down?
If, if there is a platted alley there yet, that would, they could still hold right away, which would then, if somebody wanted to build a small home or a home on it, that would get to them to go to the city and try and get that vacated.
Well, that's my question, that's my question, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the, with the, you know, all these, if I see the owner or the city of Hamilton, if it's an alley, if it's a planted alley, I know in the process of Marion County, we have to do a vacation and has the alley been vacated?
Sorry, are you talking about the alley this morning, the small piece?
Is that the property in question?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the alley.
No, sir. If you look at the map here, you see that blue green number seven?
Yeah.
That seven is sitting in potentially a alley or not.
Right.
It's a lot is the.
Which lot is?
This one.
Yes, it's.
Number seven?
Seven, yeah.
Yeah.
So the area in question, the parcel in question Steve, is the blue on the screen, the blue rectangle.
I see, okay.
That's what Marion County got acquired through that tax sale, I can't remember who the treasurer was at the time.
Connie Houston, or Catherine.
Catherine Houston.
Yeah.
So went, went through the process, backed taxes to get Marion County name on it or take ownership of it.
I have a question for you. When we have to do all the notice of public hearing, all that, what does that cost us? I mean, when you think of.
It's a relatively small fee to put a legal notice, legal notices are cheaper than paper on the tax stats.
I mean, we're already paying for it, right?
If we put notice on that, if we took notice in the paper, thirty dollars.
Okay, so it's relatively, okay, I thought it was more than that, okay.
It was a separate special notice.
Yeah, this would be.
Okay.
I mean, it would be a, if you guys would want to pursue this process individually, dispose of the property, I mean, it, I don't believe Ross intends on, if you go through that process, paying for an abstract deed or anything like that, that would, it's not, it's not something that it's a warranty deed, that type of thing, it would be a boot claim deed.
Yeah, it'd be similar to what we've done with some of our other properties, we just dispose of it with a boot claim and.
Right.
Get it off of our books and.
Right.
Back on to the tax rules, I don't see any issue with this at all. I don't know why we would have property in Hamilton anyway.
I honestly didn't, I'm a seller.
Yeah, I didn't either. I don't have a problem with this either, as long as we just have to do the formal process.
So let's have a motion to either go forward with this process or not. Who wants to make that, I'm going to make that motion, let's go forward with this process.
I'll second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a underwriting engagement letter with DA Davidson for our Pleasantville project. Really nothing out of the norm there, just we need to re-up Michael and his group as we work through the process on this. Jake, anything we need?
No, it was, I don't know if Michael's on or not, but this was, this would happen every time you guys would start a process like this and if, if the project doesn't, if it doesn't take place, then it doesn't cost you.
Right, doesn't cost you, yeah.
It's them signing us to be on our, on routine.
And just keep in mind Board, for the Pleasantville project, I mean, the things we're waiting on really are from Pleasantville right now. That's Joe and his group have to work out a lot of details there and we hope they do, but this just solidifies our arrangement with Michael and DA Davidson. Any questions?
I don't have any.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make motion to approve DA Davidson's. I'm ready.
Second?
Ramey?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have a request to appoint Kurt Froyen on the Veterans and Fighters Commission. Mike, anything you want to add?
I'm just glad he said he would go on with us, that's.
All right.
My part, my part in this, I'm very happy Kurt's doing a great job, it's good to have him on the commission.
Well, we appreciate Mr. Froyen's, we appreciate Mr. Froyen's willingness to continue to serve in that capacity. I would say Mr. Hannah and Mr. Froyen, they were my teachers, so I gotta say.
I hear that a lot. Heard that twice this morning already from the recorders, I was, well, I had him in science class.
Well, he's my best microbiology teacher I think I ever had and I even went to Iowa State, so.
Yeah, good, he's doing a great job.
All right, very good. Any questions?
Appreciate, appreciating wanting to do it.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make motion to approve an appointment of Kurt Froyen.
Second?
John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye, very good, thank you. All right, next, we'll declare the public hearing open for an FYI 22 Marion County Budget Amendment Number One.
Yeah, so this is budget amendment number one for Marion County. Due to timing with 10 to 20-day notices and a three-week layover between meetings, we ended up on this date, so.
Yeah.
Apologize, it's a little bit later than usual.
No, no worries Jake, what do we got?
So we have a, it's kind of a far-reaching overall budget amendment with some really big numbers, but it's playing a lot of, a little bit of catch-up from behind if that's the correct term. So from an actual individual department's standpoint, there weren't really any individual departments that just needed more budget room than what you had already budgeted. Everything, everything that's in here is, is somewhat special circumstances. So I don't know, at this point, you want to just run through some general or?
Yeah, run through the main terms here.
Okay, so the main terms. So for Tyler needed a turner, and you know, we set this budget so long ago and then, you know, things happen so by the way, so Tyler needed his, his amendment to catch up with the DOT budget, like, if I understand that right, is that right?
I have.
Yeah, is that right?
Yes, ours is obviously the largest expense, eight hundred thousand, but it's a net zero.
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand expense and eight hundred thousand of reimbursement from the highway bridge program. If you recall last budget cycle, I did not have this project in the county budget, but between January and April, when we had the DOT budget and program approved, we added this project and it was approved as part of the DOT budget, so this is a reconciliation between the two.
Any questions on that, so it's a net, it's a net zero?
Yeah, that's what a lot, a lot of this is on this, it's a lot, a lot of the, kind of like court services for youth detention, that additional twenty thousand dollars is like new expense that you weren't, that has to come out of savings, that type of thing.
What would it be for court services?
It's youth detention, so like emergency services or placement that are disadvantaged.
Okay, okay.
So then Secretary of Department, so Steve is not here, he's in California for Conservation Department, is, is a result of his building project being delayed again and catching up in that between two fiscal years. And then he has the ability as conservation to take parts of his unused budget and move it into the Fund 68 of the trust account that he's going to be using on his project as well. So Steve did quite extensive additional revenue that wasn't in the additional, in the initial budget and then some projects rolled over that will roll forward towards his project. So again, this isn't anything that hasn't been done before, fairly large numbers, but it needs to be able to fit within the actual budget as well.
Okay.
And you can see on the bottom of each of the summary pages, the net fund, so Steve's is actually a net zero to five one.
Right.
We move on to Public Health, Kim Dorn is just, I don't know if she's here today or not, but Kim Dorn is, again, from the time the budget was set to sign, tires and grants and different things came through, she is asking through, it's quite a large number of revenue amendments as well as just making the expense side bigger to catch up to grants. And this is, I believe, speaking for her rather large grant that is coming online late in the fiscal year, so she needs to make sure she can have budget room for it and it's a minimal amount. If this actually happens, because we realize this is just budget, not actual expense yet, forty-six thousand in general fund, twenty-four thousand in sub fund.
Right.
And again, this is a, in this case, it's to make sure that there's room if things happen that quickly with the grant.
Right. Okay, then our next big one.
Reef is the next big one from Steve. Reef is funds that is gotten each year from the state, he's using this for a project. Cash is there, he just needs the expense room to expend if he does.
Right, okay.
Medical examiner is, would be twenty-six thousand dollars additional budget room and again, we got it a little bit higher than maybe necessary end of year. Again, this is purely autopsies, debt and all those things like that, so unfortunately this time of year, that gets a little stronger, so this was added basically twenty-five thousand to that autopsy line as a, so we have room just in case if there isn't any expense, we don't, it's just budget goes away.
Right, okay. Mental health?
Mental health is a little bit unique. Mental health is a, is a large number. Mental health has to basically clear or empty its Fund 10 into the new sub fund at the end of the year, so we'll be receiving some sort of document or something from mental health folks at the end of the year, probably do a handwritten check to zero out Fund 10 and put into that new sub, mental health sub fund, Fund 01009. So in essence, to be able to write that last check to clear that fund, they've had expenses all year and then there's a fairly healthy cash balance in that fund, so there was an estimation to get to an expense line enough to be able to empty the fund into the new mental health sub fund, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
So again, nothing new from you guys. It's not new, it's not new to your money, it's having the ability from an expense budget line to, to zero out one fund each one.
Yeah, see, I think that's critical when we understand these, whether you snapshot pictures of this or not, that eighteen to twenty-four, much of this is to make room for cash that either we're going to receive, have received, and are going to expend through grants. I'm not trying to over summarize it Jake, but that's most of what, now, let's get to the non-departmental part, non-departmental piece.
So onto the non-departmental piece and again, a lot of numbers and some pretty large numbers. As you can see, most of that is ARPA, a lot of it is ARPA, I should say.
Yeah.
So at the time that this budget was set, we didn't have anything budgeted for ARPA yet.
Right.
So we're, we have to have the expense line to cover that and did half the revenue and some expenses that we are incurring as we go. And let's see, so that's, that's the first major portion is all the different ARPA funds and the individual lines, you see, that's how we're tracking each of the projects.
Yeah.
So and all those are within the residences that you have approved so far today. Then we're going to go into VA campus project and bond money that you guys have discussed for a long time. At the time of this budget being set, we're not sure if it was even going to happen and then, just because we had to set a budget, we budgeted the expense in, we budgeted the expense in the normal capital projects fund that we historically had put our bond money into and expended up. And then after, after thinking about it more and having time, it actually happened and not to mix like the pretty rich bond money versus the, we set up a new fund, Fund 30,001 and that's what we're going to continue to do for the future projects to keep those monies separate.
Okay.
So I had to clearly, we're lowering the budget for Fund 30,000 to the VA bond money and increasing expense amount in Fund 30,001 for the VA private money. So again, nothing new, it's, it's admin side, you might say, how we've been paying that out.
Yep, so we're counting it. Okay.
It's, if you notice, there was ten million, at the time, the budget discussion was ten and I think actual, it actually ended up, we're spending a lot of money on the projects.
Correct.
The next is a, is a catch-up from that as well, Fund 40,000, which is a part of debt service fund. When we received that bond money, we did not spend, we, we got less than coming from the bond company and it wasn't booked as an expense, so working with our orders, we needed to book that expense for issuance of the bonds. So that, that part wasn't, again, it's catch-up from when the budget was set to actually with the bond money. So no new money again on it. Public Health Fire Loan is a Fund 1 expenditure that was new and then the loss reconciliation coming out of those funds, we were a couple years behind in reconciling the 20-day agreement that Mike, our new city manager, referenced earlier. those funds, we were a couple of years behind in reconciling, uh, the twenty day agreement that Mike, our new city manager, uh, referenced earlier. We had been doing an annual reconciliation that we pay it on estimates and reconcile it, but after fact, we were two years behind and because of the rather large amount of, larger than the normal amount we received, uh, from the state, uh, we needed to reconcile two that up, and it had already been deposited, so we need to expand it back out.
Right.
So that's what those are. I'm, we're either working on, seeing where we are with Knoxville on that as well.
Okay. Anything else Jake?
Those are the highlights, no, I realize they're big numbers, but we're, we're catching up.
It's cash in, cash out, or it's making room for cash we expect to receive.
Right.
Given what we've gone through the last couple of years.
In, in nutshell, um, there's not.
But there's no new taxpayer money we're asking for.
New taxpayer money and.
That's what we need to emphasize.
And the general fund is, is, um, not particularly.
Yeah, very good. Any questions for Jake?
I don't know.
There's a good job explaining that Jake.
Yep. And when I think of the, when I think of the accounting gymnastics they have to go through to account for expenses and revenue, it's just amazing, you guys do a phenomenal job.
Thanks.
Especially when it's all the state stuff.
And then they throw ARPA in there, right? Thank you Jake.
All right. Any, uh, this is the public hearing portion, are there any questions from the public? And again, be mindful, we're not asking for any new taxpayer money. Okay, I'm not seeing any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Is there Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two, which is adoption of this budget amendment number one, is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two.
I'll second.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three, which is the appropriation. So now we approved it, now we have to actually appropriate it.
That's correct, and, and in this instance, I did assume you guys would want to agree a hundred percent of the expense, that's what this resolution is. Just because of the nature of what it is.
It's gonna be bad if we said fifty percent right now, wouldn't it?
So I did make that assumption, I wanted you to be aware that this is a hundred percent of.
Absolutely.
Appropriation of the amendments.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three, I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye. Next, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six, which is Business Property Tax Credit Application for FY twenty-three.
This might be my last one, I hope. I think this is the last of the credits, and this is also the last time we'll be bringing this. For you guys, uh, the last meeting I believe it was, it feels like it was a really long time ago, but we did the homestead and the no credit credits and the, the family farm credits. Um, this is, uh, the Sessor takes applications for Business Property Tax Credits, so this would be any new, um, uh, applications that they have received, um, in the, in the time period allowed to be placed on their taxes for the upcoming tax season. The ones that have already been approved stay, just like homestead, they stay. Um, just as a caveat here, they did not, everybody asked this last meeting, like, they did not, um, unless it was for approval of all, they did not, um, recommend any disallowances.
Yeah, that's, okay.
And so we will, if, if approved, these will be applied for this year, uh, upcoming taxes, uh, as a tax credit to the, um, commercial business owners. And then, um, this will be it, because they've changed the law.
Yep.
I don't know what it looks like exactly, but there will be no more, there's some sort of Business Property Tax Credit, but it will be, my understanding is that all parcels classed as commercial or industrial are going to receive an initial, um, rollback off the first hundred and fifty thousand value at the level of the, um, residential rollback.
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
And then it will, um, go up to the ninety percent after that, so the, the ninety percent of rollback will remain. And so it will be non-application, so if people haven't been getting Business Property Tax Credit, that will be applied to all. I don't know that all the logistics or software has been written out on that yet. The state has, um, created a allotment of money to pay this, to pay county, city, school back, that type of thing. But of course, it's capped and this is, and this will be the base, here's so many growth, at a certain point, they may have to start prorating that back. So, so.
We'll see how it goes.
See how it goes.
Sounds convoluted. Why wouldn't it be right?
It's from the state. What? What? All right. Jake, thanks for working on this.
Yeah.
I know this is not easy stuff. Is there a resolu- or is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, make motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six.
Second.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-nine, which is our RISE Grant application for the Highway one sixty-three LDJ project. Tyler, you are up.
So we've had our ads and flows of grants recently, as far as good news, bad news, but this is one of the good news.
All right.
We have been awarded the RISE Grant for the Highway one sixty-three traffic improvements at LDJ's manufacturing facility. So, uh, the first agenda item here is approval of the Iowa DOT funding agreement. This would be a similar agreement to what you would typically see from HDP or STP or TSEP or any of the grants that we typically would receive at the road department. Keisha and I have reviewed this, uh, agreement and I recommend approval, any questions?
Tyler, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, I really do, I know the amount of time that everybody has put into this, um, and so thank you, I thank Tyler, I thank LDJ, I thank Carla, so, for helping them, so, this has been a long time coming and, uh, I know that we're all excited to be, when we received the award and then Jennifer getting back to us and giving us the agreement, so thank you guys, so. I, I personally do not have any questions, I have read through this, um, a couple of different times Tyler and I have discussed and so, yeah.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-nine.
I'll second.
Ray?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty, which is the agreement between LDJ, Marion County, for this project, Keisha?
So in regarding, uh, Tyler, if you want to speak just a little bit in regarding, uh, hiring Gardner and Associates to oversee this project?
Yep, so the agreement you just approved puts, puts the wheels in motion for the project to happen for the traffic safety improvements. As stated, uh, my department can't expend funds or resources outside of the county right of way, and so we, I solicited a, an agreement and a proposal from Gardner and Associates for the design, survey, design, construction, inspection, and administration, and project closeout for, uh, the term lands associated with that project. So you have received, I, on a couple of occasions, I sent you the contract and the agreement between Gardner and Associates for those services. Their estimate of services was included in the grant application, which exceeded the fifteen percent allowable by the grant. So there will be about a sixteen thousand dollar share that you would have to come up with as the county, uh, outside of what the RISE Grant would fund. Just to make sure, clarify that one more time, so. I believe I copied and, uh, sent you a copy of the email I recently received from Gardner stating that if the project progresses into calendar year twenty twenty-three as far as closeout or possibly construction, there could be an increase in fees for the construction inspection administration side. As part of their reframing, just full disclosure there, that's, that's what they stated. I did follow up because we received this, the estimate a couple of months ago as part of the grant application that the design portion is, uh, good as originally written, as per the amount of dollars. Any questions on that?
So just want to make sure, because what this does is gives you the authority to go and get that agreement put in place.
It's going to give you, your, the agreement will be between the Board of Supervisors and Garden.
Well, but you're gonna, you're gonna.
But I will work with them and LDJ to move the project forward at that point.
Right, right, but they're gonna bring another agreement back to us with costs and.
No, that's what this is, this, this is an agreement for design and engineering services.
If you, yeah, if we look.
Yeah, so, so when you think about the cost though, that you just articulated Tyler, where's that at?
So that's in.
Turn the agreement out.
It's on, well, when you're looking at on number fourteen, on agenda fourteen, it does have the total cost.
What's that?
Is this what you're?
Well, I'm just thinking normally, if this is the agreement that we're signing.
Yeah, that's the resolution.
Which, yeah, and then you got the agreement in the next one.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay, now we're getting agreements.
So that's why I want to make sure, because we've got multiple agreements here.
The Board of Supervisors and Garden Associates, the next agenda item is an agreement between the Board and LDJ. Previous agreement we just approved was between the Board and the Iowa DOT.
Right.
This is simply.
There's a lot to this, yes.
The Board and Garden Associates for design, and there's a contract and agreement for services and fees within that agreement perceived with the project, similar to what we would do if our department solicited for bridge design or road design.
Right. So... Hold on just a second.
So if you, if you, if you, what you're looking for is this?
Yeah.
So if you're looking, you're looking for that amount and what you're looking at, so that's the agenda item. Fourteen is, it has the amount, what we're looking at.
And which frame?
So this would be item number fourteen, and this is the agreement with the RISE project for LDJ manufacturing. That would be an agreement between.
Yeah, so this is a, this is stipulated, the sixteen thousand two fifty is what you're talking about for the engineering services.
So going to the project agreement.
Yeah, so what Keisha's pointing at is in, we've got a stipulated paragraph here, whereas saying that the, the engineering services are sixteen thousand two fifty.
Estimated.
Estimated, yes.
What you're saying is that there are some, there are some variances that could occur to make that number go up.
If we go into twenty.
If it extends into another contract here.
Just like any engineering agreement, we typically have, uh, those are based on hourly rates and their hourly rates are stated in that, within that agreement.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, those hourly rates may change if we progress into the subsequent calendar year.
So Tyler, to make sure that everybody understands, uh, number thirteen is just the resolution for, we're agreeing with, um, Gardner and Associates. That's signing that agreement that, that we're going to, probably hiring them.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I've got all the costs here clearly articulated. Because there are some costs that LDJ's going to incur, there are costs we're going to do to support that, which would be the construction, then there's the engineering side with Gardner. Correct?
Correct. The next agenda item we'll discuss for.
It's just all been, it's all been one guy's. Too many, too many moving parts.
I don't disagree there.
The, the RISE, I mean, it is.
Well, the RISE grant, the RISE grant I, I get, but when we're talking about if Gardner is a key component of what we're going to pay, then I'm trying to figure out what their rate is, I mean, I got sixteen thousand two fifty. Where does this agreement tell me what the other cost could be for Gardner?
It does not.
Okay.
It was in their agreement that was included as part of item thirteen in your, that I emailed, as part of item thirteen.
Yeah, okay.
Their agreement. Now, if you, if you go back to the application that was made for RISE, it stated X number of dollars is included in the RISE project for engineering. Then there's an additional sixteen thousand dollars estimated that was above the fifteen percent threshold that we're allowed to pass for, from RISE for engineering.
Okay. So what? Just tell me this from an engineer perspective, sixteen thousand two fifty, what's the variance, plus, plus the variance that you think could go into it?
Four or five thousand bucks.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
I would, uh, I think we also, also have to keep in mind that Gardner's going to be in charge of letting the bids and doing the work. There's.
Take just a second.
No.
Yes, thank, I didn't have my glasses on.
I can hear you.
I know, they always. Gardner will be in charge of letting the bids and getting the project done. So they would have a lot of controls as to getting it done this long. And, uh, we are also working with Gardner on the rest of our whole building project. So we will be, uh, livingly encouraging them to keep this going, of course, because that's a, a big effect on us.
Okay.
So I guess, and LDJ will do everything in our power to make sure they get this done without getting into a, an increased situation.
Perfect, perfect.
If we did not solicit proposals for this project, um, I requested the estimate and agreement from Garden. Because they had performed the traffic impact study of this particular area as required by the Iowa DOT. So they were familiar with the project, they're also local, uh, they were under the threshold where we did not have to solicit for proposals, so just full disclosure there.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, so I'm not going to hold you to your, the actual estimate there Tyler, but, but if you're saying roughly four thousand variance, roughly, you guys will hold them to account. Make sure they stay on that, then I'm comfortable with this agreement or this resolution authorizing you to go get an agreement. I don't know why, we just can't do this anymore, but, no, well. Steve, do you have any questions?
No, I, I can, I clearly understand it very well, I believe.
Yeah, no, it's, this is, um, in regards to Gardner and Associates, obviously, they are, um, they are the ones that do a lot of this, especially in the Pella area, um, so I, I know that they, you guys have been working with them. I know that Tyler is used to working with them, and this, this project, um, is very important, but also surprisingly, the RISE grant, they demand a lot. And that is something that we can't have, Tyler doesn't have the time, um, you know, so Tyler has put in plenty of time in regards to this when we did the application. So that was a discussion Tyler and I had, had, so.
Appreciate it, okay. Is there a motion on Resolution twenty twenty-two sixty?
Yeah, make, um, approval of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixty.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye. Very good, thank you, now we're on to Resolution twenty, oh no, turn the page, as Bob Seeger said. Project agreements.
So this, I'm, I'm gonna just set this up for you and let you and LDJ discuss this item. This is probably the third time you've seen this for a variation of this draft agreement, uh, for what I would call a development agreement. This was an example taken from different counties, Keisha and I have been through it, um, as well as comments from LDJ. I did make a revision yesterday, thank you Keisha for the catch, um, there was a number of jobs the LDJ had provided that would generate from this expansion of theirs in the application. Once the project was approved by RISE, they approved it at a lower number of jobs. So I corrected that to show thirty, not, I think forty-two or forty-five. And I believe that is stated in paragraph four. Paragraph four states the forty-five additional is. Paragraph four states the forty-five additional is what they are projecting, but they are only required to provide proof of the thirty as stated in paragraph four B. Just clarifying that. And then I will let Keisha take this one here.
Yeah, just mainly Keisha for me, Steve might have other questions. Explain paragraph three.
Okay, so, and regarding the RISE, so ultimately, you know, it, as it states, the county will be ultimately responsible for the project up to the twenty percent. So the only reimbursable amount is the two hundred and twenty-five thousand and one dollar. That's, that's all that they're willing to, to give. So, and, and then we have the estimate of total between of seventy-two five would be the difference, and that includes Gardner and Associates, what their fees would be. So this, the seventy-two thousand and five hundred dollars is what we'd be looking at out of pocket as a county. And then, and that's in, something we have to discuss and whether, how we want to proceed, whether we as a county want to pay for that and incur that cost, or we want to work out an agreement with LDJ.
As LDJ, we would ask the county entertain looking at, I mean, as we've been walking down this project for many years, working to get this way. We've invested a lot. We're signing up to invest in a lot of money in expansion, resources, and providing jobs. And I know there's a lot on the county's plate as well, but, but we'd love to entertain the fact of continuing this partnership with the county from that side. At least the consideration from that standpoint, so.
No, I appreciate that. Tyler, that seven, or Keisha, you want you two to answer this? The seventy-two thousand five hundred estimate of the twenty percent and the fifteen percent? Okay.
So that would be, right now, that's the estimated county's out of pocket with no contribution.
Right, you pretty confident about that?
Yes.
Number?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, any questions?
No, that, that's, that'll be discussed in the next one.
Yep, 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 yep. But it is something that we do need to, I mean, when you're bringing up in discussion. I would like to also say LDJ, I mean, you know, you know the commitment, the three years, you have to, they, very closely, the DOT will be monitoring and making sure that, you know, that is, those jobs are fulfilled and they have to be held for six months, so.
We would love to start the project today. I think I had four, four of you members start just yesterday morning, so we're aggressively on this path already, working the grill and build for the expansion of some of this. So it's trying to get this timing as, from our standpoint, the RISE grant doesn't go into act until all these requirements, till the project is finished. So we still believe we have opportunity to, to exceed the requirements of this by that point. But with the growth we're seeing, we would like to keep it reasonable.
And I, and I, and I'm with touring, you know, the facility, yes, I can see where you guys, where your growth and, and the demand, so, yes.
I see that there is a default clause.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions? All right, is there a motion on this project agreement?
Is there any motion to approve the project agreement with LDJ, the RISE?
Second.
McCollum?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
And now the contract. With LDJ, contract for reimbursement. Tell me what this is.
So again, this was an example taken from another county's RISE project. This would be subsequent to the recently, the just approved agreement for the project. If you decided to share the disbursement of what is not covered by the RISE grant.
This gives us options as a, as a board to whether when we're discussing with LDJ, we, this was in the last time we discussed this too. And at the time, it had fifty percent on there.
And I. The percentage and dollar values are blank in this agreement, which is to proceed with this agreement.
Yeah, at all.
Right, so of that twenty and fifteen, this is, will LDJ defray any of that twenty and fifteen?
The seventy-two, yeah.
The twenty and fifteen percent from the previous agreement?
Yes.
Right.
As stated in paragraph three.
Yes. So this syncs up with that prior paragraph to potentially reduce what is that estimated seventy-two five? Am I understanding that right, Tyler?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, what are you guys willing to pay? Let's just ask it straightforward.
Well, like I said earlier, I'd love to see the county carry this portion of the RISE grant requirements, but we're also heavily invested in seeing this for our staff and for our company from the safety side, so.
So you'd like us to pick up the whole seventy-two five? Does this be straight, as you say, you guys pick it all up?
We would love to see that from our standpoint of what we're at from what we paid for taxes, where we sent the county, and some of that. And also with the liability we have with the investments, the cash out they were putting in the building and trying to grow the job opportunities with the county as well, so.
Jake, seventy-two five, probably general fund?
I, I believe, second, catching me off the top, but I believe secondary road fund is not allowed to expand outside of the right of way. So it would get general fund expense.
I, I, after discussion with Keisha, general fund isn't what I put in the application. I don't know that we are held for that, but that is what.
Makes most sense.
My assumption is general fund.
Yeah.
It, it would definitely be liable a lot of that because it's general for anything.
Incorrect, we are not allowed to expand secondary road funds.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the other fund would be lost.
Correct. That would be the other option.
Yeah, so.
There'd be only two options.
And we can, we can probably determine that as we go.
Again, I don't think this will be expanded out before the end of the year, before two thirty, assuming. And next year's budget is already set, so if it's something that's outside of the line that you already have, we'll have, we'll have to do an amendment just like this, like we did prior.
And so what was your employee estimate for staff and?
So we're planning on adding, this is Greg Clark, we're planning on adding over forty-five jobs over the next three years. So we're already adding jobs currently, but we don't get to count those additional jobs until after the completion of the, the turnways to the facility. But we're expecting our growth to continue significantly over the next five years.
Okay. From a company health standpoint, feel like you're growing the way that you want and new business is coming in and?
Yeah, we do. Right now, we currently sit with a healthy backlog worth of orders, so a lot of customers petitioning for our product. We got about nine months worth of work secured in our backlog currently that we're not keeping up with. And also with just the economic opportunities that we see within the product that we're providing and the things going on, we believe that we're hitting a niche that is needed, that is out there, but we've got a lot of customers buying our product. And we're also investing a lot into an industrial market that is newer for us in the last three to four years. And the industrial market is grass, or drastically taking a large percentage of the production we're doing. So trying to branch, we started an ad. Now the industrial side is aggressively growing, more than fifty percent of our, our orders coming in, so. And we see that coming. With the RISE grant, there's also required for a new product. So our, our truck chassis product line that we've come online with, we've got a backlog of those, just waiting on four chassis and Dodge chassis with the auto industry. But a lot of this addition will also be creating the facility and the space to add for that production for that market, which is new. And it's a niche that, that there's not a lot of competition out there for, that we're fulfilling a, a vast need. So in emergency response, as well as fuel delivery within metropolitan areas and some of that.
Excellent, very good.
We, we feel fairly confident. God's own, who knows the trends are, but.
That's true.
But we believe that we've got a very good outlook for the next few years that we're, we're looking at as well as constantly running casualty plans against that, that we can still meet the requirements, even if there is a dip in recession that could affect us and, and still hit there. So we do have some of that built into our estimates in here as well, but I believe it could be quite a bit above this if things go well.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, that's excellent, excellent, thank you. I, I do not have an issue then with, with covering that four seventy-two five or whatever that twenty and fifteen turn out to be Tyler. Whatever that variance is, I'll hold you to the four thousand. I'll just take it out, your budget next year, is that right? All right. Steve, any questions?
No, I, I don't, other than, you know, other than the fact that you're pretty much on the hook to the DOT anyway if you don't.
Yeah.
If you don't meet, meet these requirements, so I guess that's the impetus for you to strive to get the.
Yeah, we, we run the numbers of our, and multiple times, different ways through some areas, through this process. As we've looked at those details, just making sure that we've got backup plans and some of that if, if this were to happen, that we did not add the jobs.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm excited for the job creation.
The main concern that, I'll be, I'll be honest with the county, that we have is finding the people for the jobs. So a lot of our conversations around the competitiveness, making sure we're, we're staying competitive in the county, finding the people within the county. Sometimes having to go out the county, but, 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 yeah. Here in the conversations earlier in meetings today, we're, we're in the same boat trying to find the people here, so.
I get it.
Very good. Keisha, anything else?
No, I just appreciate, I wanted to put that in there because as a discussion item, you know, in case we weren't, all of you weren't a hundred percent. And when I met with them, I told them, I said, you know, I can, I don't know what the other two will, will want, and so I do think it was imperative that we have this. So I am supportive of that.
So, so I don't know which one of you, are you, Tyler, are you running this agreement or Keisha, are you running this?
In what, in the?
For our blanks here, because we got to fill in our blanks.
Yeah, we fill out blanks to sign it.
Yep.
So we're gonna say what? If we're gonna, if we're gonna cover that seventy-two five Tyler? Are we saying we're gonna pay up to a hundred percent, up to a maximum of seventy-two five?
I think the company.
That's the company would be zero and zero. Zero and zero.
Or zero, zero, yeah, well, that's just, yeah, okay. So we'll just play zero, zero?
Yep.
Zeros. So let's put zeros in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this contract between LDJ and Marion County? Commending paragraph three to insert zeros for what the company will owe the county for the non-RISE portion of the project. Did you get all that Jake?
I think so.
All right.
We can listen back if you need to.
All right.
The justice.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCollum?
Hi.
Very good. Gentlemen, thank you.
As a spokesperson for LDJ and all our staff, huge thank you. They're all very invested and very much appreciate the county's support, so they'll be excited to hear.
Best wishes as you continue to grow.
Appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
Can't wait to, to see all the growth.
All right, next item. The egg. Have we torn it down yet?
Coming out last.
Yes, we actually did, did you guys?
We did, we tore it down.
Last week, we have the first building down, so things are going pretty well. I'm, I'm gonna miss, miss these moments in a couple of weeks where I get to.
We'll probably just leave it on here just for the.
Please don't.
Safety.
We wanna, you know.
No, things are going very well. We're still on schedule to be done thirty days prior to our contract expiration, which would put us here in a couple of weeks towards the end of June. Things are going very well. We officially, as of this morning, when I was out trudging around the still-wet campus, we think we finally got the end of the duck bank on the north side. But we did find duck bank on the south side this morning while we were exploring. So we don't think it's near as much. We believe it was just one run in the back, but we will, we will see. So we're, we're at a position where the duck bank has officially been removed as of this morning on the north. There's still a pile of it out there. Our, our hauling contractor gave us quite a few more trucks for this week, so we think once that duck bank is out, we're gonna have some light piping and things, some very light loads to go to dump. And then we can move to the south side, move the duck bank over there, all off the underground infrastructure. And in short order, we actually hope there'll be no more trucking of degree past the end of this week.
Excellent.
And then just dirt, lots and lots of dirt. Seating contractor comes next week, I'll be meeting with them to remind everyone of the, this is not an additional expense, this was already planned and in the initial contract that this would be seeded. We're gonna pick some very route-resistant hybrids to, to put out there to make sure we've got soil stabilization and also look at mulching as well, so we're almost there.
Excellent.
And then I will disappear for about a month and I don't know what I'm gonna do, I have four days anymore. Crazy. Any questions?
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi. All right, now we have a liquor license application, five day for countryside wedding events, wedding and events.
Yeah, so this was a late, I appreciate your flexibility on this. Started receiving a phone call. In essence, this is a five-day permit for a business called Your Private Bartender. I believe it's Amber, that on, has been very, very, very quick and responsive in all of the requests. She just, they have a business that they do this for, and there is an event at Countryside. Countryside apparently is going through a dram shop change, so they, that's why they're not using it under their license. The countryside itself is their event, so they, they have, have Your Private Bartender requesting this five-day liquor license application. And they very rapidly completed all the steps necessary, dram shop review and through the airport beverages. It's all been through them on their side for this five-day liquor license for an event at Countryside line.
Okay.
So they filled everything very rapidly that we require, including drawings and permissions and all that stuff.
Okay, very good. Any questions, board, on this?
I'm just looking at, making sure, it's only for five days, that you're sure?
It's a five-day license.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, no, no problem.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Any question, go ahead.
I make a motion to be approved, private class C liquor license for Your Private Bartender.
Second.
Ramey?
Hi.
Combs?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good. Updates. Mr. McCollum?
No, I have none.
I don't have any area.
Yeah, only update I have is we had a very good discussion in Pella yesterday. My thanks to the chief of Pella PD, along with our emergency management folks, to talk about schools in light of what's gone on across the country. Just had a good, good discussion with the bulk of Pella educational establishment and law enforcement in that area, along with the sheriff. Just talking about that topic and protocols and procedures that are already in place and where we go from there. So good, good initial discussion. My thanks to Jeff and Emily for letting me tag along, so it was very good. Other than that, nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCollum?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, thank you.